All right, good evening, everyone. We are ready to go. I call this meeting of Hampton City Council to order. Today is May 23, 2023, and it's 7:04. Could the clerk call the rules, please?
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Choudhary?
Present.
Councilman Wood?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Yeah, present.
Councilman Hassan?
Present.
Councilman Raffai is not present. Mr. Mayor is present. Mr. Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. Strike for the community for ladies. Thank you. Do we have any community announcements?
Mr. Mayor, I have some, but Lynn also has one, if you don't mind.
Hello, Mayor, Council. On behalf of the Hampton Arts and Culture Commission, I'm following up with the... There's an attachment on the board docs, and we sent an email last week. The commission is planning a Juneteenth event. It's our third annual event on June 19th. It will be at Sarah Guerra Park from 10:00 AM to 1:00. And our focus this year are health concerns in the community. So we're pulling together some people and resources to address that, but then also just acknowledge the holidays as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I got a couple. This past Thursday, on the 18th, there was 85 trees planted in the vicinity of Lumpkin, Fleming, North of Kniff. That will finish out our grants that we had with the greening of Detroit. I'd like to say congratulations to CED, Max, our coordinator on that, and then all the participants in that. On Friday, the 19th, volunteers from GM Carers came out and cleaned up the mess, which was even better. And then on Saturday, the 20th, this past Saturday, we had the annual health hike, which was... They actually have a bunch of representatives from that here on a different topic that do that annual upfront, which was a big success. And I believe we also had one of the clean sweeps as well going on. And then the last thing that's on here for anyone to view is what Lynn just mentioned is the upcoming Juneteenth flyer as well. That's all I have for us.
Thank you. Good evening, folks. Salaam alaikum. I'm inviting you to all. My campaign kickoff, it is coming up Sunday on the Memorial Weekend, which is Sunday through 5. You are cordially invited to attend that campaign kickoff. It's going to be free barbecue, free ice cream, free basketball hoops, and bouncy house for the kids. So it's going to be right next to my business, 10021 Conan. There's an empty lot between the house. And this event is going to be very interesting because community people is going to join. I invited many of the streets, many of the community neighborhoods. So come join us and enjoy the day. Thank you. Are your opponents invited too? Everyone. Yes, of course. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Any other announcements?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for everyone, the show up today, the meeting. And I got... We mentioned for the community. I received many calls. People, they have a ticket for trash in the alley, in the grass. And we need from everyone, keep it clean. In backyard, in the alley, make sure everything is clean and put the address in the back in the home. When we keep everything is clean, it's not going to make a ticket. Don't make the claim for the ticket, and we have a lot of trash. Friend the house in the back in the house. Please keep everyone, make everything clean. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? No? All right, we move to proclamation, recognitions, and presentations, and we start with recognizing Hampton's All-Star Junior Coalition. Right, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, just we have all the representatives here for that as well. We got a full house, so it's at your pleasure.
I'm going to read the proclamation, and then you can have a step up and speak if they want to. Is that one? That's worth it.
Perfect. All right.
Hampton's All-Star Junior Coalition. Whereas the youth of Hampton have demonstrated an unwavering commitment to promoting public health and preventing substance abuse and addiction among their peers. And whereas All-Star Junior Coalition of Hampton has distinguished itself by creating an outstanding public service video that focuses on the dangers of vaping and substance use and provides guidance on how to support friends who may be struggling with addiction or mental health issues. And whereas the All-Star Junior Coalition video has been recognized as the best in its category, earning first prize in a competition that includes many other talented young people from across the region. And whereas the All-Star Junior Coalition's success is a testament to the dedication, creativity, and hard work of our members, who have worked tirelessly... Of its members who have worked tirelessly to raise awareness about the importance of prevention and support. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Hampton congratulates the All-Star Junior Coalition on its outstanding achievement and thanks its members for their service to the community. We encourage all citizens to watch the coalition's video and to join us in supporting our youth as they continue their important work to promote health, wellness, resilience in our community. Signed, Mayor Ammehyel. Do you guys want to step up to the podium?
Good afternoon, and I want to say that I thank you for supporting us with the video, and we're thankful for our support that you see the video and make sure that Hampton is a free, a base free. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. I am director of the Hampton Drug-Free Community Coalition. So we just, on behalf of the coalition, just want to thank you for your time, your recognition, and support of what we do. I think it's... It's not lost on any of us that, you know, discussing these types of issues, especially at this age group, can feel a little taboo, a little scary, especially among our peers. But we have a fabulous group who has shown that prevention is exciting and cool. This was not mentioned in the proclamation, but their first place prize is actually an all-expense-paid trip to Texas and for a special conference for coalitions like this throughout the country, where they can just continue to expand their experience, their knowledge, and just continue this work in our community. So again, we just really appreciate the time and recognition. I think we all do. I speak on behalf of the coalition and the junior coalition, so.
And I know I emailed somebody regarding the video because I wanted to play it, but nobody sent me the video. If somebody can send it to me, we can post it on our website or, you know, Facebook. So that would be nice to share with the community, okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Next one is Flock Safety. Presentation on their license plate reader cameras.
Chief, and Flock Safety.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council. As you may recall, we've had a few conversations about the Hampton Police Department considering license plate readers in our community. Tonight, I brought Laura Holland from Flock Safety, and she's going to provide some information to you. Just as a reminder, this is just informational at this point. We have not done any RFPs. We've not sent anything outside of that. We've not done any memorandums of understanding or made any attempts to purchase any equipment. This is kind of just informational to see if it's something the city council is interested in moving forward with. We have had several cases in which our detective bureau believes that we would have had some very good investigative techniques had we had license plate readers in our community. One of those being the carjacking that we had on Conan. I know some of you have mentioned that at a meeting. And we actually were able to get some information captured off of another community's license plate reader camera involving our stolen vehicle that helped us lead to an arrest, which the city manager had updated you on, an arrest that we had made. Some other information about license plate readers in other communities and some success stories that they've had. Where license plate readers in the metro Atlantic area were able to find a vehicle containing a kidnapped one-year-old child that had been taken from his mother. There's been several silver alerts, which are missing elderly people with dementia and things like that, where they've been able to locate those using license plate reader technology. There's been reductions in other communities around the country of firearm violence and violent crimes such as robberies and carjackings, which you know that we've seen an increase of those in our area. So I just want to mention a couple of communities in our area that do have license plate reader cameras, including the city of Detroit, Michigan State Police, the city of Dearborn, Roseville, Oakland County, Macomb County, Ecorson, River Rouge, Madison Heights, Dearborn Heights, Ferndale, Troy, Lincoln Park. Those are cities that surround us that use license plate reader technology. So I just wanted to introduce Laura Holland from Flock Safety to give you some information from their company's perspective. If you have questions, I'm here to kind of jump in with you.
Yes. Yeah, thank you so much, Chief Moise, for inviting us here today. And thank you, Mayor and Council and city manager for letting us share some information on our approach to the license plate reader. I believe that you all will have the PowerPoint that we'll walk through, and I would love if the audience can also see the PowerPoint as well. So our company was founded in 2017 by an individual who himself was a victim of property crime. And he had individual cameras on his home in his community, and he provided that footage to the police after he was burglarized. But the police told him that they couldn't really do anything with that information. What they really needed was the image of the car that the individual fled in, the back of the license plate. And so our founder said, you know what? I'm going to figure out how to make this happen. And so he built the very first Flock Falcon device and put up a license plate reader in his community after talking with his neighbors. Sure enough, a few weeks later, that same individual came back to rob a neighbor, and they, this time, had the data that the police needed to be able to solve the crime. They had the picture of the license plate. And so after he started to see this success in his community, he said, wow, other neighborhoods, other communities probably have this same problem and want to partner with police to provide them the data that they need to solve crime. And so he created our company, Flock Safety. You can go ahead and go forward two slides. People often don't realize that policing can be very challenging, right? You've got a lot of different needs and desires from your community that you have to balance. Our technology tries to multiply the force by providing an image of the back of the car with these license plate readers so that police can act quickly in the event of a crime. You can go forward two more slides, too. Most people don't realize that about 70% of all crimes are committed with a vehicle. And so we see that implementing this type of tool, having this objective data, can really make a long-term impact on the challenges, the safety issues that your communities face. Go forward again. So how does the technology work, right? I keep saying license plate reader, picture of the back of a car, but you'll see on the very next slide an example image from what our technology tools. So our cameras can be solar-powered or AC-powered, depending on what works best for your community. And they take an image of the back of every vehicle that passes by this individual camera. We can then allow police officers to search based on things like the plate, whether there is a plate or not. We know a lot. A lot of times, there's a temporary tag or a plate was removed. They can also search by the make of the car, by the style of the car, if it's an SUV, if it's a sedan, and they can also search by the color. This allows police to have more data points to be able to pursue their investigations after getting leads from a variety of sources. A couple of things that we want to highlight that we are not, from the very beginning, right? We are not people. You cannot search people in Flock Safety system. We are not facial recognition. We are not traffic enforcement. We do not allow cities to send traffic tickets or red light tickets. We are purely a crime-solving tool and focused on that use case alone. And go to the next slide. I've already covered a couple of the things that we're not, right? But I also want to highlight that we only store the data for about 30 days. So that means that your police will have 30 days to be able to investigate crimes that occurred with this information. And unless there's an active investigation, that the data is then downloaded onto the police record systems, all other data is deleted after that 30-day period. You can go to the next slide. So there's really three ways that this technology works. And I think it's important to distinguish between the three ways because you might have questions about each specific way. The first way is proactive. And that's where we provide real-time alerts to law enforcement whenever vehicles that are known to be associated with a crime enter your city. So we will provide those alerts based on the National Criminal Information Council's list of felony warrants and stolen vehicles. We will also provide those alerts based on amber alerts and silver alerts for missing seniors and missing children. Those proactive alerts, we see, actually help people get a longer-term view of crime because most people don't realize that when a stolen vehicle enters your community, they're not just coming into the community to have a fun ride. There's often a series of other crimes associated with that individual stolen vehicle. And so by giving your officers proactive notice about the stolen vehicle entering your community, they can actually end up preventing other crimes from occurring, like property crime or sometimes potentially violent crime. The other piece of our system is investigative. And that's where, like I said, we allow your officers to go back in time 30 days to search to find what vehicles could have been associated with a specific crime. We can share some more examples of that, but the investigative portion is really important because we know we have to balance the need to provide law enforcement with the data that they need to investigate and the protections of civil liberties, right? So we're not just tracking long-term where the data is potentially being misused. And so we've really tried to create that balance with that 30-day time period. You can go to the next slide. The most important part of the conversation for councils, for elected officials, mayors, for city managers, is how you make that balance, right? How you prioritize safety and also make sure that you have the right mechanisms to hold folks accountable and to be transparent with your community about how you're using this technology. We at Flock have tried to make that easier for you to do. So we can go to the next slide. There's a couple of things about a Flock partnership that I want to highlight. I know that you guys are still in the very early stages, but if you choose to pursue a Flock Safety partnership, you guys will own your footage. That means that you guys determine who you share with, who your police department will not share with, and they'll include those details in a policy. We at Flock will never sell your information, and we don't share it without your permission. I've already talked about that 30-day data retention. But we also want to highlight how important it is to provide this objective data to police, especially because we know how unreliable eyewitness accounts are, right? And so by focusing on the things that are objectively illegal and providing an objective data point in an investigation, you can often get a hold of or get a handle on any kind of misinformation or leads that aren't going to be accurate. We have top-level cybersecurity. I'm happy to answer more questions about that. We're SOC 2 certified, and we store end-to-end in different encrypted keys. We also require an investigative reason for every single search that's done in our system. And that investigative reason is then proactively reported in an audit portal, where your chief can then see every single time her officers search the system and why they searched, what filters they used. And that's for your officers in your community, but also anybody else who searches in the system as well. And so we made that tool to really be able to allow our chiefs to act in the event that a tool is misused because we all know we can't prevent there from being misused. We can only act in the event that it happens. I've already talked about a couple of other things, you know, not fish recognition, not predictive policing. We don't connect to any third-party databases, so the law enforcement network is totally separate from Flock Safety system. We don't connect to Carfax, to DMV, right? All of those things are separate from Flock Safety as an additional privacy protection. And the last thing I want to highlight, I don't know if you can click on that transparency portal link, but we created a transparency portal that we provide to our customers, and it allows them to communicate with their communities how they use the technology, right? So this is an example out of Jackson, where they have highlighted some of their policy details, right? They highlight what's detected, what's not detected, how they use it, who in their department has access to the information. They also highlight the number of cameras that they own and the number of hot list hits. So, you know, those hot lists, that's what I said about the stolen vehicles, those alerts that they've gotten in 30 days. Other communities share even more details. Some communities share their public search audits or who all they share access with. So depending on what you all would want to include in your portal, this is a tool that we've made so that you can be transparent and let people know how exactly you're using the system, what it is and what it is not. To conclude, I'll go back to the presentation, and I just want to talk you guys through a couple of real-world examples, right? So you can see, in addition to what Chief Moise shared locally and from Georgia, some other examples of places where this technology has made the difference. So you can go forward, I think, three slides? Yeah, that one. Excuse me.
I was going to talk about that one, and I forgot you brought that one up.
Yeah, so this is out of Dearborn in a really sad situation. This woman was reported missing in Murfreesboro, Tennessee. This is a young mother with children, and she was believed to be taken and endangered because of her partner in a relationship. And no one had any idea where she was. But the Murfreesboro Police Department is a Flock Safety customer, and they worked to put her, the vehicle that they thought she might be associated with, into our system. And they actually got a hit on that vehicle in Dearborn, and it ended up initiating a short chase where some gunfire ended up being exchanged with the Michigan State Police and the individuals driving the car. And when everything ended, unfortunately, they found this woman who had been kidnapped, deceased in the back of the vehicle. And the two individuals that were driving the car were on their way to Michigan to get rid of the... Or not to Michigan, excuse me, to Canada to get rid of the body. And so this is an example of a situation in which this six-year-old, who had no idea where her mom was, would have never had resolution about what happened unless the police had this data to be able to act. You can go to the next slide. This is a situation out in Dayton. This happened actually in February, and this individual, Mr. Hamilton, shot and murdered someone that he knew in an interpersonal conflict, which unfortunately is where most gun violence happens. He then stole a vehicle to flee the scene, and Dayton had installed our cameras, and they actually immediately found Mr. Hamilton. And those detectives said that Flock needed to be highlighted because without that technology, they wouldn't have been able to find this suspect. You can go to the next slide. This is out of Van Buren. A 26-year-old woman was hit by a vehicle on a service road, and unfortunately, they weren't going to have a lead unless they had installed our technology. They had found some debris at the end of the road, and they actually had an image of the vehicle around the time that they passed or around the time that they expected that it had happened. And they ended up finding that suspect by identifying the vehicle elsewhere and matching the debris to his vehicle where he confessed to the crime. You can go to the next slide. This is the example she talked about earlier, an amber alert. And then the last one, I think, can just show the longer-term implications... You can go to the last slide, yeah. ...of installing this technology. So when you provide, when police have the tools that they need to effectively solve crime, we know that clearance rates can decrease. We know that crime can be deterred and reduced. And this is in Cobb County, Georgia. One of our very first customers. After two years, they have solved 100% of their homicides, which is really unheard of in a county that large and with crime as high as it is in the metro Atlanta area. Police Chief Van Hoosier credits our technology specifically with being able to help in get those cases clear. So I'm happy to answer any questions from you guys now or later, but thanks so much for having us to talk about it.
I do, thank you. Thank you so much for being here and giving us these presentations and illustrations. So what is the cost for the city?
Yeah, so we are $3,000 per device per year.
$3,000 per device. So if this, every crime or every investigation, who is responsible for the actual cost? I know we pay for the equipment, but say a victim called in, and now there's an investigation going on. So the patrons pay for it, or it's...
Yes, that's a great question. So we are a subscription model. So that means that whoever owns the device will pay a yearly subscription fee. So if, let's say Hampton had one device, they would pay $3,000 per year if they leased that device from us.
Is there, like, did they have to sign a consent form before there's an investigation going on? Like, anyone requested, like, you taking it, you know?
Are you talking about, like, the victim of a crime would have to sign?
The victim of a crime, like, they have to sign a form to give away their privacy, their rights to get an investigation going on?
No, because basically, we're taking a police report from them and then using either data that they, and information that they have provided. Maybe it was a red car, maybe they knew part of the license plate, and then we're using... So their information isn't being compromised in any way because it's not part of the data coming off of the license plate reader. It's strictly just trying to find a license plate for a vehicle, which we all know is visible to the everyday public every day when you're driving down the street.
Sure. Thank you. I love to see the community's safety. This is a tool that we can utilize and give the benefit of the doubt that it's going to help the community's safety. So it's pretty good. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, she introduced us. It's up to us to what we don't think about. If you don't find the plate, how you operate it. You got to think about that, too. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, so, yeah, go on. Ms. Laura, thank you. I really beg your support of the cameras. I've been talking to Chief Moise and, you know, city manager, vigorously to have those kinds of systems in place in our city to reduce the crime. And if you reduce the crime, our insurance rate is going to go down. The safer city will pay less money for their insurance. Many people are complaining with our Hampton City Insurance. I don't know, one of the things that not matching with you, what you said, I was doing this little Google search. It's a 2,500 horsepower camera we installed. Why you say 3,000?
Yes, yeah, we just had a price increase. That $2,500 was...
An increase to our city?
I know. Sadly, we increased on, it's on April 1st. Yeah, so we had been the same price since before the pandemic, and due to all of our parts cost, we had to increase.
And you have to sign up for seven years, or how does it?
No, so we have, different customers do different things. We have some cities that will do one year. Some cities will do two, or as much as five.
What is your headquarters located at?
Our headquarters is in Atlanta, Georgia.
You guys 25/7, 24/7 customer service, or?
We are.
Thank you for giving us the presentation. I have a question. Sometimes a fake car did operate. Are you able to catch all these things?
Yes. So we catch an image of every vehicle that passes. And so the way that it will work in the system is if it's a temporary tag or a fake plate, it will be indicated as not an actual plate.
And why you could only for one month?
Yeah, so we created that standard as a balance between, like I said, the need to be able to provide investigative data and then not wanting to have so much data that could potentially be misused. So we tried to create that middle path between some privacy advocates and then public safety advocates.
Thank you very much. I'd like to move forward.
Okay, we're not voting, but is that... Can it be used to track, you know, speeding cars and reckless drivers, too?
So it's not used for traffic enforcement. I will say that we've had some communities where they do have a lot of reckless driving, which is a crime in their community. They can't identify the vehicles that were on the road during that time period, but they have to use that in addition to other data in order to make a case about reckless driving.
All right, thank you. Any more questions?
I'll send a quick question. Is this tied into Lean?
We do not tie directly to Lean. All of that has to be searched outside of our database. Thank you. Thank you all.
To the additions, additions, agenda approval, we have Resolution 2023-72 approving termination of contract with Z Part Lawn and Snow and proposing it to BCL Contractors. So...
Give the motion to add, please.
This is all we need.
I need a motion to add. And then we have a second.
So we're going to add it to be... GH, right? I'll be... L, B, C, D. No, sorry.
Does everyone agree to add a piece?
Yes, yeah, yes.
Thank you. Now we can have a motion to discuss the resolution, please.
I'll make a motion to discuss.
No, no, no. Accordingly. The last one.
It's in the new business now. All right, so we'll get to it later. But now we have the public comment section.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Barbara Smith? Hampton resident, three minutes.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Veronica Smith, and I just come here. You probably seen it in your email. I'm also sponsoring June 13th, 19th, okay? And with the one that's at Sierra Garrett's Park, he's been doing it for three years. So I don't want to take nothing away. This is going to be our first annual, June 19th. And what we want to do is, as a family friend who's near here, so what we want to do is start a veterans' park where people can load, because it's going to be a picnic, so they can bring their stuff to veterans' park. And then the plan is to get a bus, get buses to take them to Sierra Garrett. And then we're going to march from Sierra Garrett down to Joseph Campo, and then break up and end up at the park for the overall affair. So I'm coming to you guys today. The fair part is actually donation-driven, okay? So depending on what we get for donations, then that's how we have to, you know, that's how we have to work. And also, to let you guys know, when this goes on, it's going to be a history-making thing for the city of Hamtramck, okay? And so we need your support so we can make it there. Because it's going to be, it's going to be real, for real. Because we've never seen nothing like this in the city of Hamtramck. So most of the council members and the administration, I've sent you all emails, even you. I've sent all of you, it's called a donor box, you know? And if you can't donate, maybe you can give us some volunteering support or any type of support, you know? Let's just come together as a community, okay? Because I love my city of Hamtramck. I've been here all my life, pretty much, okay? So let's do this, so let's do it right. Because the lights is going to be on this event on June 19th. I guarantee you that, okay? So I have some information, I can leave it on the table. And I really would appreciate anything that you guys can do. Take in-kind contributions, whatever. But one thing I can tell you guys, this is going to happen.
Thanks, Veronica. Thank you.
And thank you, guys, for listening.
Hello, Mayor, Council. First, I'd like to congratulate the All-Star Junior Coalition. And the question was already asked. I want to see the video. Super excited about that. So hopefully that gets circulated soon. And regarding the agenda items, Resolution 2023-65, I'm really excited about all the new developments coming into the city. I do have a couple concerns about the Joseph Campo development. But specifically 12 residential units in that specific location, my concerns are around parking. We all know, we've already heard a lot of concerns about parking in that area of Hamtramck with the bike lanes and access to businesses. And I feel like, you know, just figuring out where those 12 potential residents are going to park is something that needs to be considered. And I also am a little bit concerned. I was looking through the site plans, and it says in one spot that the bedroom, all the bedrooms have windows, but the buildings on either side are taller than that building. So I'm curious how, just how those windows work and, you know, the fire safety about that. Again, I'm really excited about this, though. And then regarding Resolutions 2023-66 and 67, the developments on 9509 Gallagher and 9466 Mid-Dubo, these are gorgeous. If you haven't seen the plans yet, I think those are really gorgeous. It's my understanding that the same developer, same plan for both sites. My concern with that development is a basement apartment in Hamtramck seems fairly ill-advised with the history of flooding in the city. And so I'm just really curious what precautions they're taking against flooding and if they're aware of the history of flooding in Hamtramck. Because I'd hate for someone, you know, for them to develop a gorgeous basement apartment, and then we get a huge storm, and it's all underwater, and then the residents are asking for help and have lost everything. And then just a couple more things. Resolution 2023-68, I am in support of the vehicle purchases. It's been discussed at council on a number of occasions, how the fire department needs upgrades to their vehicles and their fleet and everything. And I think this is a really solid step in that direction to be a fully functioning fire department that serves our community. And then, can I have another minute? I promise to tease them. Regarding Resolution 2023-70, I'm really excited that we're bringing youth interns to Hamtramck. I don't know if you guys approve, of course. And I'm curious if there's opportunities for the right student to help with things like, or to learn about grant writing and help with the CED, or help with the elections in the clerk's office, and what opportunities there are for youth to really engage in meaningful ways outside of just beautification. Beautification is really important. But I was just curious what other opportunities there are for these young people coming in to get some real-world job experience in our city. Thank you.
I plan on taking the 140 by the way. Is that Ramis?
Hold on. I just wanted to add, Lynn, just to respond to your, is there other opportunities in City Hall? We're actually partnering with Michigan Works right now. Where Michigan Works is sponsoring youth in our City Hall in pretty much almost every department. So police has signed up for it, Third Floor, Clerk's House, pretty much any department in City Hall is available for that.
Awesome. Hi, Ramis Wadud from ACLU, right?
Yep.
Detroit resident?
Detroit resident.
Three minutes.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Ramis Wadud. I'm an attorney at the ACLU of Michigan, the American Civil Liberties Union, where our civil rights organization is based in Detroit. But our work spans statewide. I'm a Detroit resident, but I consider Hamtramck my second home. My mom's worked in the community for the last 15 years, so I hear that my family is active in the community as well. I wanted to come here today to express the ACLU's concerns about the adoption of automated license plate readers. I know today's presentation from Representative from Flock is strictly informational, and so I wanted to join this conversation early to express concerns that have been raised nationwide about the potential impact of license plate readers on privacy and on the civil rights of the residents of Hamtramck. And I'll start with the bottom line, is that adopting a network of cameras around the city of Hamtramck essentially would treat every resident of Hamtramck, every visitor to Hamtramck as a potential suspect in whatever crimes they could investigate, auto theft, break-ins, whatever it may be. I understand safety is important, but we must be careful before turning every potential resident, every visitor, into a potential suspect. That makes so many people feel much less safe than cameras would make people feel more safe. There are specific issues that have been raised across the country, even in the state of Michigan, regarding data, how long the data is held. Essentially, the Representative from Flock said that data would be stored for 30 days, which creates a database of essentially every person passing through the city, every person living in the city. A 30-day-old database of whenever the city police department wants to search the database, they can reach almost every resident and visitor in Hamtramck. Another issue with data sharing, especially in cities with a large immigrant community. We've seen cities propose using the data pulled from license plate readers to share with ICE and with the Border Patrol to help with immigration enforcement. Also, issues with accuracy. Like all technology, this isn't going to be 100% accurate. You're going to capture an image of a license plate in a fast moving car. You're going to get a letter wrong, a number wrong, and you're going to send the police to have a confrontation with someone who's not an actual suspect. And so I'll leave it there today, is that this is the beginning of a conversation about the benefits and about the concerns about license plate readers. And it's your responsibility as a council to consider those concerns. At the very least, implement very strict safeguards as far as how this technology is used, as far as how long the data is stored, and how the data is shared, if at all, with agencies outside of the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Meyer.
How's it today? Yeah, ACLU, all right. I'm a member of that group. That's great. Looking out for people, yes. But I'm not going to talk about that issue. I'll say that to the end, because I assume you haven't changed the rules yet. Then we've got to talk about agenda items at the end. So I just want to say I missed my favorite entertainment in Hamtramck for the last few years. I'm sorry. But I really appreciate the work you do, and it's always great to see you all. But I got good news to say for sure. And most of you know, because I sent John an email. But Hamtramck, I read it in several sources. I get several emails and looked it up. That Hamtramck is the fastest-growing city in Michigan. That's an amazing thing to think of. What, 1,400 meters per hour? We're the fastest growing? That's a good sign. Also, where the owner-occupied homes have increased 55% in the last five years. And we've always tried to avoid absentee landlords who love to just make money off of buildings and not keep them up and ruin the city. But now we have a lot more owner-home buildings. So owner-occupied homes, I mean. So one of the great ways to track people to the city, which is something that we've never had since I lived there, at least for 20 years or more. And I looked through this directory, Hamtramck directory, and there's no category for it in here, in either one. Why don't we have a hotel or a motel? Why don't we have public housing for people to come in, for guests to come in and stay in town? That's what brings people to the city. You have to have some place to stay when it goes. And then we got bed, breakfast, and all that stuff. I mean, what do they call it? Hotels and motels are quickies, and when you see them there, a lot of people are using. So we never have. So a reason I bring this up is because my friend Yad here, I think, is offering a new construction in Hamtramck for the first time that I know of, that it's going to be multiple dwellments in the short term. And it's going to allow guests to come into this town, stay for a short time, and learn about our city. It's a beautiful thing. So I totally support what you're doing, and I'm sure you guys do, so. That's pretty much what I'd say right now. But since I have a whole minute left to talk.
50 seconds.
Oh, 50 seconds left to talk. But I can ask for another minute if I.
You could.
You know, people are enforcing the garbage cans law now, you know? That's good, because everyone is, but now you have to put them in your yard, and they have to be in there up until the day your garbage can, then you put them off of the garbage, and then you have to have them out. There's half the houses in my alley here have no way to get these garbage cans into their yard. That's our bad. Their house is like, it got this sort of space in the garage, and they don't all have gates to get into the yard. Some have their back fence totally closed off. So, I mean, we have to help these people who don't know how to get their garbage cans out of the alley. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Ms. Josephine, Hamtramck resident, three minutes.
I've got two minutes. I have a question for you. With me is the problem, because my husband, he got a heart attack a couple times. And then sometime I park in the alley. Like, I bring something, you know? I can't come from the outside. And the alley, a couple minutes, I want to take my stuff, you know, put in a car, and they give you a ticket right away. It's not right for elderly people. Because I'm not parking to park. I don't have a garage, so I just park for this. And the couple minutes I take my stuff, or like, I want to put something, you know, like, I bring the bag of the daughter or something. I can't come from outside. I have to bring from the alley, but they give you a ticket right away. So it's not right for the people in Hamtramck. I understand. Alley's supposed to be nice and clean, and we do, I do all the time. And the second thing is meter in Hamtramck. Because so many people sometimes stop me and upset, I got a ticket. I put them in the meter, my number, you know, money, 75 cents, not 25, whatever. And then they, I got a ticket. Like, I got this ticket, and then a lot of people, I'm just living here close to the City Hall, stop me, where is the City Hall? I paid the ticket. Elderly people come and, people, they don't want to come to Hamtramck. You know where they park? They park everywhere in the corner where there's no meter. It's not right for the people, too, because we're losing the people. We don't have enough residents coming to Hamtramck because I'm scared, I'm scared to come. They don't want to go to restaurant. They're going to restaurant, they park in the corners, walking, they say, because the parking is very expensive. They should do something, too, for people to bring the people. And the third one is they clean the Joseph Campo. Like, I walk sometime, it's so dirty. The people who are, you know, working over there, who have businesses, they should keep cleaning and put a flower like before, very nice, and keep all this. And the special, that you say, is that a lot of kids play right here. They play the soccer and everything, the soccer, you know, they go everywhere, and they take going, you know? And then they want to hit them, the speeding is so bad for them. Sometime I just say, I hope they don't get a kill, and they close to police. So this is my point, and this is my problem. So I would like to, you know, especially in the alley with this, don't get a ticket because it's very expensive. And then I don't want to, you know, like, I can bring nothing from outside, you know? They take a couple minutes to unpark and park, and they leave. So this is my big problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would recommend that you connect with the city manager to discuss those issues.
Okay.
Maybe there's a way to help you.
Okay.
And I wish we can solve the parking meter issue, but it wasn't us who.
I know, I understand.
Bring me that parking.
It's the big problem.
Bring it to the city manager, the parking.
Yeah, a lot of people come and, a couple African-Americans would come and ask me, what is the, elderly people, what is the ticket? I got a ticket. I said, what place?
All right, thank you. So communicate with Max, hopefully.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments?
No, sir, that's it for public comments.
All right, so we'll move to the consent agenda, and this is approved in a single motion with no discussion. We have A, approval of minutes from the May 9th, 2022? It's 2022, I assume that's the typo, right? It's supposed to be 2023 regular city council meeting. B, approval of home boys registered date ending May 23, 2023. C, approval, pre-approved expenditure date ending May 19, 2023. And D, 2023-64 approving appointment through boards and commissions.
Make your motions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, cool. So the point is with the board, Mr. Khaled Bosami, you want to? Hey, do you want to tell us about yourself?
I'm Khaled Bosami. I've been living in Chicago for almost 33 years.
That's enough.
33 is a long time. 33 is a long time. So you're going to take the oath?
Handle, please. I state your name.
I, Khaled Bosami.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the United States of Michigan.
And that I'll faithfully discharge.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
The zoning Board of Appeals.
Zoning Board of Appeals.
Of the city of Hamtramck.
Of the city of Hamtramck.
According to the best of my bill.
According to the best of my.
Congratulations, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So move now to the new businesses. We have Resolution 2023-65, conditional approval of site plan of 8902 Joseph Campo.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, we have Ms. Faulkner from our CED, and we also have our developer and his contractor here.
Hi, good evening. I just want to talk about the site plan for 8902 Joseph Campo. I'll say a little bit, and then you can share a little bit about the project as well. So it's located on Joseph Campo between Roosevelt and Goodson. Originally, the applicant proposed six units back in 2020, which was approved. But now the site plan is proposing a 12-unit residential structure plus two commercial units. And so that's why we have come back to the site plan process. It is in the central business district. There are no parking requirements for any uses for the central business district at any time. That's part of our zoning ordinance. Mixed use, commercial and residential uses are permitted by right in the central business district. We've had a few reviews of this plan already, and those are all attached in BSNA. The staff does recommend conditional approval. Conditional approval means they need to submit a few more things, and it will be approved. So you're approving it sort of in advance of those six conditions. Those would be that HVAC and equipment appliances must be screened, the rear facade, which is concrete block, would need to be painted, proposed lighting would need to be provided. So lighting should be shielded downward, for example, not shining out. Details regarding trash management need to be provided. Any pavement that's adjacent that's in poor condition, or, you know, just from this process needs to be repaired. And any permits, sorry, any work done in the right-of-way Wayne County, they would need to get a permit for that. So again, as a staff, we are proposing that you approve it conditionally based on those six conditions. And I'll give a report to you.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add, like new. That business was an empty lot for a long time when Mr. Ed turned it into a business to help visitors to come in Hamptonhammick and have a short-time rental instead of, you know, having a whole house. We don't have anything that's similar to what he did here that I've known. So that's it. And all these six required requirements, things that we have already did, and if there's anything that's not there, we will...
Any questions?
Well, I know brother, Amtray is a good builder, and he's a good investor. We appreciate you putting the effort to this, you know, we needed them. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think we all said, we can go to the discussion, right?
Yeah.
So I think we all said...
Okay, thank you.
The session is here. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Yan. And also Hamptonhammick City Administration, and especially you, what you said today with the condition of the six items is very clear you did your job. Okay? So that kinds of director or employee you need, and to help the investor, help the residents. The gentleman expending money, and the developer also said that kinds of design wouldn't have around Hamptonhammick. It's very important we need. We need more building like what you doing. Because there's more people try to come from other state of United States in Michigan and Hamptonhammick. So we have to provide them houses, apartment, and everything. So like three weeks ago, suddenly, I was testing my Uber account is good or bad. So suddenly, I got a call. Okay, let me see. And I found, I was in around the grassy area, just want a coffee and things, and came to the, like, bringing me to the Hamptonhammick. What's going on? Okay, okay. So, and I think Sumar is the one messing with me. That's what I think. And exactly came to the street, Arabic mall, Arabic B or something, like a, from the Ohio, Tennessee, couple of graduate bachelor students came in Hamptonhammick, enjoyed the Detroit Hamptonhammick area, there took the house in Hamptonhammick for couple of days. And I was with them and enjoy, because all bachelor engineers and other degree holder. And I feel proud of it as a Hamptonhammick resident. And I did give them a lot of service, helped them take the Yemen cafe, take to the, I think that time owner was there, and take to the main street. You know, I feel very good about it. So that kinds of building, if we have in Hamptonhammick, more people will come, more people expend the money and help, that beat all the expense in the local restaurant, gas station, and the bar. Okay? So there is the Hamptonhammick revenue. Second thing, there is a building bigger than your one, don't have any parking anyway, is the residential area, not even commercial section. So I don't want to waste my time and everybody's time. It is very good idea. I want to, developer also, please find out some more to make us some more bigger house, because fire department, we have, we have the strong support, you know, for that kinds of building. Thank you.
All right. So it's, in the summertime, we have so many events and have weddings, and so many people comes to our state for a short-term stay. And they always wants place for short-term stay. So many of them are relatives to the people who are celebrating the weddings here and stuff. So that's why we need more, you know, Airbnb or hotels or motel. If there is a big investor to turn the jail into a hotel, that would be fantastic, and a housing complex next to it. It's a 14.7 acre, and we are looking for investors. You know, I wish it could be residential, other than, better than industrial.
Would be a big parking lot.
It has to be. So, yeah, thank you. Any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just to clear myself, is it the Airbnb apartment or motel?
Yeah, air.
Airbnb.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we can go ahead and vote.
Thank you. Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahwood?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2365 approved.
All right.
But before we go to the next one, I have two email comments to read. They're not about the agenda. I can say them to the end if you're okay. If they're not regarding agenda, I can read them at the end, or I can read them now.
You can suspend the rules of the end if you want.
Yeah, we'd like to suspend them.
Say it at the end?
Yep.
Okay. There are not anything about the agenda or anything, they're just personal, so I can say them to you. Okay. Thank you.
So you're going to read them now?
Oh, you want me to read them?
I mean...
If we read, we have to suspend the law.
Yeah, that's...
So I'd like to suspend the law.
Okay. All right, I guess I'll read them now then. This one is from Philip Quick. I'm going to, I'm going to time myself, because they are long emails, and I'm going to, okay, four minutes max, okay? To the ma... No, I'm starting. Hold on, I got to reset. Bill got his timer going too. "To the mayor and city council members, I want to thank the city of Hamptonhammick's community and economic development department, the greening of Detroit, GM cares, and many dozens of volunteers who planted trees in Lumpkin and Fleming on May 18th and 19th. The trees look healthy and the blocks look great. The volunteers cleaned up after themselves, leaving the area in better shape than they found it. Urban trees are so important for the city like, for a city like Hamptonhammick, which has concrete as far as the eye can see. Trees help lower energy costs by keeping our houses cooler in the summer. Their shade lowers air temperature, making our city friendlier and more walkable. They help abate noise pollution and add value to everyone's property. And perhaps most important, trees help mitigate the negative effects of storms, improve water runoff, directing floodwater away from all of our basements. Twenty-seven years ago, in the years after a tornado hit Hamptonhammick in 1996, the Hamptonhammick volunteer group preserved our parks, preserved our parks, and the greening of Detroit planted 1,000 trees throughout the community. Unfortunately, urban environments are tough on trees. Cars and exhaust pollution and salt from winter roadways take their toll. Approximately 40% of those trees planted in 1990s remain. This is why it is important for Hamptonhammick to commit to a regular program of planting and maintaining a tree canopy. Trees, parks, and green spaces, and recreational facilities, and bike paths contribute to the quality of life in Hamptonhammick. These are the projects that our residents need so that the city continues to grow and prosper. Once again, thank you to the city and all the volunteers who worked so hard to improve the quality of our life here in our community. Best, Philip Quick." Not bad, minute and a half. Next one. This one is Kelly Foreman. "Dear Rana, I am Hamptonhammick resident, homeowner, and I have friends who have been ticketed for having their trash bins in the alley, and they must, and that they not, and that they must not be open in any way. I request that city council revisit code enforcement and to change this, or at least stop enforcing it for the following reasons. One, rotting trash and the vermin who visit the bins are a threat to public health and should be kept in the alleys, not in the yards where children are playing and where the smell in the summer months make it impossible to enjoy time in the backyards. Large families with little kids are especially problematic. The combined smell of a week's worth of diapers combined with rotting food in 90-degree heat is beyond description. Number two, it isn't easy for residents to drag these heavy bins in and out of the yard every single week. They are quite heavy when full, and elderly or weak residents face serious challenges doing this, especially in the winter months. It also creates unnecessary wear and tear on the wheels, leaving them tidily next to the fences in the alleys is the logical pla... tidily next to the fences in the alleys is the logical place for them to be. What possible, number three, what possible use are you saving the alleys for, if not for trash? Alleys aren't used by emergency vehicles, just by trash collection, and residents who drive down them to park in their garages. Our yards are tiny, we don't have room for trash to be stored on the property, and having it close to where we are living possesses health issues, poses health issues. Number four, it is impossible not to overfill the bins, such that the lids are not fully closed, and this is because families are large in Hamptonhammick, and trash very quickly fills up the bins by midweek. It is reasonable to expect that trash be in the bins and overflow in strong tied-up trash bags, but it is not reasonable to expect larger families to somehow deposit their trash elsewhere. If this requirement is enforced, then Hamptonhammick needs to consider twice-weekly pickup so that the large amounts of trash is managed. And with home delivery now common as in Amazon, Walmart, or Kroger, the additional boxes and packaging creates more trash than what was the case a decade ago. I think that the city is prioritizing the wrong things at the moment and could focus on rental properties with serious structural problems and yards full of trash, or on businesses whose overflow dumpsters attract rats, rather than forcing residents to stay inside all summer in order to avoid the smell of the trash close to their living spaces. Code enforcement should focus on properties where trash is spread all over the place, including the alley, but to leave alone the bins in the alleys and to expect them to be overfull unless twice-weekly collection is started." Again, that is from Kelly Foreman. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that is all.
Thank you. And for those people who care about the plant, about planting trees, we had a meeting with an organization who is applying for a grant to plant like thousands of trees in Hamptonhammick. Hopefully, they will succeed in that.
Two, two grants currently for trees right now.
So, yeah, that would make the city look much better.
And then can I also say, if the family has too much garbage, you can always order an extra garbage can for excess garbage. You don't have to just stick to the one garbage can.
Actually, since our clerk opened the door, yeah, she's 100% right. Anyone can buy a second can. The whole point of it being in the yard, or the garage for that matter, is that you are forced to keep it clean. If the garbage is in the can and the lid's closed, it doesn't smell. My garbage is in my garage, it's been in there for 20 years, I didn't have this issue at all. When it's left in the alley, people neglect them, they get dirty, they don't care, that's the whole point, they just throw it out there, it gets disgusting. If you're forced to take care of it, you're forced to take care of it.
And actually, some neighbors will drop stuff to do or trash.
That too, and we have also vagrants that go through and tear through them.
Right. All right, thank you so much. So, well, finished one. Congratulations, I had them approving that side. The next one is our resolution 2023-66, approval of site plan for 9509 Gallagher.
Offer second.
Mr. Mayor, we have Ms. Faulkner again, and she's up to bat in the next two, and we also have the developer here for the next two.
All right, thank you. Before we proceed, I caught an error in the resolution. It still mentioned Ayade's name. Did you see that?
No, hold on, let me open it.
It says the applicant, my company, who's that? But then...
Okay.
We will, we can get it fixed.
So we can fix that.
Thank you. Hi, Ayade, should I go ahead?
Okay.
Okay. Hi, I'm here to talk about this four-unit apartment building. This is actually for one of the lots that the city has already sold through the residential lot sale program. This is the developer, he can answer questions, I can answer some questions as well. So this one that we're talking about right now is 9509 Gallagher Street. The proposal is four units of housing. With people moving in, there's definitely a demand for housing, as someone spoke about earlier. There would be three parking spaces, and in order to meet the landscape ordinance, because we have a required minimum amount of landscaping in the residential zone, staff proposed or asked the applicant to figure out some sort of way that the parking spaces could also be green space at the same time, and could double as permeable and green, and at the same time provide three parking spaces. So they included what the proposed materials are. Those are designed to infiltrate stormwater runoff, and basically, they, like the last one, this would actually be conditional, I don't know if we can modify that as well, because there are four conditions, and just the agenda didn't say conditional approval. So the four conditions for approval would be that we need a few more specific material designations.
It is on the reservation.
Oh, it is? Okay, I apologize.
No problem.
More details on the lighting would need to be provided, an ornamental fence to manage and trash, to manage and screen the trash is recommended, and of course, this still needs to go through other departments as well, like the building department. So that is it for my presentation, and the next one will be very similar as well. Do you want to say a few words?
Yeah, we're building two houses, another property that we're proposing is for my son. It's on McDougal, very similar. I mean, we're doing permeable parking, which, I mean, we'll take care of all the water, we'll drain through it. I don't know if you brought the pictures that I printed?
I can pull some up.
Yeah, they are, they are online, if you wanted to see them as well.
But the city council, if you have any questions, I don't know where to start.
Yep.
So this is the permeable of a product. I mean, semi-trucks can drive, or even semi-trucks can drive over this.
And you can also pull up, if you want, the site plan, or if council wants. But do you guys have any questions for us?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The second one to break.
Yeah, we'll do the second one in a second.
All right. Any discussion?
No discussion, I think the plan is good for us.
Okay.
Can go ahead and vote.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Mahwood?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2366 approved.
Thank you, and congratulations. We move to the next one, which is our resolution 2023-67, approval of site plan for 9466 McDougal.
Offer second.
This is essentially the same building on a different lot. I don't think I need to repeat anything.
Same thing.
But it's the same.
Same building, different address.
Is it a commercial area or residential?
Residential.
Residential. This building will be sprinkled also.
How many parking spot?
Three.
Three parking spots, off of the alley, right in the back.
And it is a...
Four units.
Four and then you have a three-party space?
Yeah, there is no possible way to have a fourth parking spot. Dimensionally, it's impossible.
Helicopter, because it's a flat.
Something is better than nothing. Yeah, thank you.
Do you have any more questions for us?
No, no.
Thank you.
One.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahwood?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2367 approved.
Thank you. And this is why they're all about Hamptonhammick, that it's the fastest-growing city in Michigan. There's a population and business growth.
Council approve faster than resolution.
So the next one is Resolution 2023-68, approving the purchase of two vehicles for the fire department.
I'm making an offer. Just a little second. Mr. Mayor, we have our fire chief here today on this.
Good evening, Gail. Need to read where is the shrinky?
No.
Okay, so this is just a purchase, two vehicles to replace the fire marshal's vehicle and the fire chief's vehicle. As a little bit of background, I've been on the job for 25 and a half years. This is the second chief's vehicle we've had with the department. So we've gotten our money out of it, we've got our mileage out of it. It's time to replace it.
We've had enough of the fire marshal breaking down. We kind of need him to get to where he's going.
So we went through my deal. We got a good price on these out of a Berger Chevrolet. It's the same dealership that police use to buy or purchase their Tahos. So we're just looking for approval to purchase, and then we have the cost for the vehicles plus the cost to equip them with lights, sirens, and radios. Any questions?
Yes.
How were your current vehicle?
Current vehicle is a 2010. They're both 2010 Explorers.
Sorry, what are you doing?
The fire marshal's vehicle, I believe we're going to send over for the traffic enforcement or parking enforcement.
It breaks down in the city. We're okay.
And then the vehicle that I currently have, we're going to keep with the fire department right now as a utility vehicle, and that can always be shifted over anywhere in the city as needed.
We expect a long life on these.
If your money go for it, it's good to have on you. And equipment goes on its start to our city. So this is in fact a budget, right? We have to budget it. It doesn't mean it's...
It is. It's a little budget.
It was budgeted for next year in July, but the vehicle is available right now. So I told the chief to go ahead and get it, because next year it will not be available. And we will, what we'll do is when we do the fourth quarter amendment with the budget, we will move the budget from next year, this year, and next year's budget, you know, will be reduced to 40% in the first quarter.
Same stance as we've taken with the other department heads. We're trying to get it when we can, because these, they're hard to get.
Yeah, I know. We talked about it a few months, couple of months back about it, you know, we had a very old truck.
Old truck, okay.
All right. Okay. Then we can request new car for the mayor, too?
Get a good deal on it, one of the Explorer.
Do you have a localized room for council?
It's a good deal we get through this my deal. You won't get it for private vehicles, so that would be the way to go.
My wife is telling me this Sonny Law, last year, did you saw any of my private officer? This Sonny Law, I don't know, honestly.
Yeah, they just hired the new one.
Yeah, we just hired, we just had, we just wore them in two weeks ago.
Yeah.
All right, let's go to the next one.
Well?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Approved.
Councilman Moza?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2368 approved.
All right. Congratulations. Of the last one, sir. Next one is Resolution 2023-69, approval request to change dental providers.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, we do have the HR director here today, but I probably spearhead this one. It's a slight savings to the city, but the big part is we're trying to consolidate. We have the, this current provider, the standard, that we're trying to switch to for other insurances in the city. I believe it's Workman's Comp and a few others, and rather than having one-off, Delta Dental, we're consolidating. And the slight savings, consolidation, we just decided to work.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Looks like you're changing the only company. $477 is not the one, but if it is good for the employee, we are okay. It is the employee.
Less bill, it's, the coverage is the same. It's less bills to pay. I mean, it's just more of a convenience.
No problem.
Oh?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Moza?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Resolution 2369 approved.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution 2023-70, approving acceptance of DWIHN grant for summer.
I'm making an offer.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, this is the yearly grant we get from Detroit Wayne Integrated Health. It's for the youth program. The only difference really this year is we get more money. Last year was $35,000. This year, they've increased it to 50. We're trying to get ahead of it, because generally speaking, this one comes together so fast, we're always struggling to get it done, and we've brought it to as fast as we could so that we're ahead of the ball for the summer.
All right. How many people signed up for this?
There will be actually postings for it, and we will be advertising. And also, if you know any youth that are interested, send them our way.
Sure.
Mayor, it's on the website. Posts will be on the website tomorrow.
My staff's got me covered.
All right, that's cool.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Moza?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2370 approved.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution 2023-71, approving purchase of PF fixed asset module for the PSNA software. I'm making an offer.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have our controller here today. Amir to take this one. He convinced me that it was necessary. He's got a good sales pitch.
Okay, so this is a software portion of Ural Finance, you know, accounting software. And I was shocked to find out that the city doesn't have one, because basically what we're doing is all the fixed assets that we have in the city, we're not accounting for it properly. All we are doing is, in order to close the accounts every year, we do a manual accountability of it, do some manual general entries, but there's no way to track on any of our assets. And this is something that, you know, we should have had along, you know, when we got the main software. So I tried to find out why we don't have it, and I just couldn't figure, get any answer of why we don't have it. This is something that is essential part for any accounting software, any financial software. This will give us a chance to manage our, you know, our expanding fixed asset infrastructure, including fixed assets and mobile assets, like the cars and, you know, computers, laptops. Right now, we have no way to control any of these assets. So that's the reason, you know, I would strongly recommend that we purchase this and we start using it to properly account for everything in the city.
So it seems like it will cost $17,000 and then $2,400, any of it.
Right.
So it's a fee.
Twenty-four seventy is annual service fee. Yeah, that's there after one year. Right.
But it would also square us away and also make our audits every year a little smoother.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So Mr. Mayor, how do you, we have the compromise that the CFO to have this one?
He convinced me. He couldn't understand why we, why we didn't have the software prior. I think he was bringing his corporate world experience to us and kind of made me feel dumb that we didn't have it.
So you're the man between a war.
I'm surprised it's not there, and the auditors have not made it an issue.
That's why we don't want it.
You know, that's, that's what surprised me.
Sometimes we don't know until we know.
We know.
You know, Amir brings a wealth of outside knowledge from the corporate world to us that frankly, city government probably didn't know well.
Sure.
Yeah, sometimes, you know, the software makes it job so much enhanced and smoother. These days, the technology is available, or we should be utilizing it, you know, and this is what he's recommending. This will give him a day-to-day works.
Right, but I think more importantly, what it does is it gives us a control over counting of all our assets. So right now, if somebody asks me, how many computers do you have? I have no idea. Where do you have? I have no idea. Which department? Each and every department might be keeping track of their own assets, but there's no central tracking mechanism for this. And this is what surprised me, that we don't have something like this.
All right, that's vote on. All right, sir, sound good?
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Moza?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2371 approved.
Thank you. And now the added resolution, H, Resolution 2023-72, approving termination of contract with X Park Lawn and Snow, and proposing it to BCL contractors.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have some pictures. I have two sets, so I'm going to split them between you guys here, look at them. In short, basically, last year, we bid this out, and we had a number of contractors bid for it. We ended up taking the lowest bidder, which is not necessarily always the best for our city. We went with it, we gave it a try, and frankly, it just did not work out. The expectation was to get our city to look a lot better when we did this, and in my opinion, it looks worse. The recommendation is to terminate the current contract we have and move on to the second bidder, which was our original recommendation. We have experience with that contractor in the past. They did a fine job. They were very reliable. When we did do this bid process last time around, our requirements were very clear that we were looking to improve the service to the city and that we wanted the city properties to look park-like. We want things to be edged, weed-whipped, and look better than they ever have, and frankly, in my opinion, we can't expect our residents to do it if the city's not doing it either. The follow-up and pictures we've been taking of the current contractor are completely unacceptable, and is my recommendation to immediately terminate and go with the second, the second bidder.
Just so you know, the contract is, you can terminate it anytime, so if we have another problem, terminate it. We're not going to have to pay any, anything. We're locked into the rate for two years, or for three years, and then we can renew it again for another two. But again, there's no penalty for terminating it, so if they're not up to the standard that we provided in the contract or that we think that they should be doing, we can just fire them and go to the next one and rebid it.
Our intent is to hold our contractors accountable. The city of Hamtramck pays a lot of money for our contractors, and we expect good service.
Yeah, this one doesn't have any trimming at all, all the street there, you can just see the pictures.
We're trying to fix this. We're trying to change the...
How much more money?
Expectations. It's up $10,000 more than the other one was a year, but I believe the service is going to be 10 times good, in my opinion.
I can vouch that there was numerous attempts at fixing and correcting what's been done. It wasn't just a...
How much would the contract cost?
Around $68,000.
Sixty-two percent.
Yeah, we attempted to hold the current contractors feet to the fire on this. There were several weeks of expectations that we've given them. Frankly, they're just not pulling their weight, and we're wasting, we're wasting too much time ensuring that they're supposed to do what they're doing, and they're still not doing that.
Do you have any reference for him, or did he do any previous job to any other cities?
The one we're switching to now was actually our former contractor, who did a really wonderful job for us. The only difference is that when he bided this time, we made it clear that we wanted the service to be even better. Previously, it was bid to a certain standard that was presented to him years ago, and he met that standard and actually went above and beyond many, many times along the way for us. I remember countless times where we asked him, hey, can you pay extra attention to this part or this part for this? We have an event coming here, or can you do this today? And that contractor did indeed always do that. Now, with the new added contract and the clear direction from us and what we expect, I fully anticipate that quality service to increase even more. He's been put on notice that if this honorable body approves us today, that we expect crisp edging, weed-whipping, the whole nine yards. We want it to look park-like.
So he said $68,000?
Yes, sir.
Why is it saying here $52,000? I mean...
So I'm looking at the...
Last year, we chose the new company because they offered $42,000, and this was $52,000. And the reason we actually supported the new, because when I asked Kathy, why choosing the higher bid, her answer was because we know these people. It wasn't a reasonable answer to us. We didn't know what this company is going to do. I mean, we didn't know if they are as good or better or worse until we tried them, but the answer was really unprofessional, like just because we know them, we choose their bid, even if it's higher. So that was the reason. It's not like we knew this new company that it would be better.
100% there. I mean, we gave them a solid chance at it. Our hope was to improve services. Unfortunately, they didn't live up to our expectations.
So what, it's saying here $52,000?
So I'm looking at the attached bid pricing.
I recall, I believe, I recall, we can always go back on the tape and watch, but I do recall also that there was a discussion about when we have storms or trees fall and they always show up in an emergency. I remember the conversation. But I believe that BCL did drop their cost when they knew that there was going to be an issue. I believe that they did drop their cost from the original bid to be a little bit more in competition with the $10,000.
No, I remember we were that the difference was $10,000.
Yeah, my memory is that crystal clear. I'm referencing the bid.
If you're going to approve it, approve it at the 52.
Yes.
And if it's not, if they don't agree to it, then we'll go with something else.
Yeah, and it's here, the resolution, for $52,000. I was looking at the bid.
Yeah, they dropped it from the original.
So, yeah, $52,000, give it another try, see if it do well. I mean, continue with them, if not, for someone else.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So now my question, I've already and Mr. Mayor's already clarified, if we fire somebody, we don't have to, you know, pay anything, but no lawsuit, anything.
For any reason whatsoever and any time whatsoever. If we just get sick of them, doesn't matter.
So we already let them know they're not doing the good job and...
Oh, yeah. They have had ample notice, councilmen, at this time, and our city attorney also reviewed this contract. I reviewed it, then I had our city attorney review it just to make sure everything was above board, that we can terminate this. We are, our belief is 100% that there's no issue with that. We've given them weeks of opportunity to bring their stuff up to par. We've taken photo evidence, we presented them photo evidence, we went back out and checked it. There is no doubt in my mind, they are not going to get to where they're supposed to be.
Yeah, I don't want to, next year, this time, John come, this one not doing good, I got to get another one. So, and same thing, I want to say to the CFO, that contractor, ah, this guy not doing, I need another contractor, so we don't want that kinds of things.
We're going to hold them to the fire. I mean, if they're not meeting our expectations, they're gone. I mean, we, we don't, we can't expect our residents to keep their stuff crisp if our contractors aren't doing it.
On the record, we sell everything to somebody else. He is going to provide all the service without money, maybe, who knows?
All right, let's go to this.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Moza?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2372 approved.
Thank you. All right, so we move to the reports. I'll start with the mayor's report. As usual, we mentioned the activities that we have been doing over the past week, which I forgot tab of them because there's so many. We had the honor to join Lempasian opening, you know, grand opening of the area of character recovery last Friday. It was a good event. I didn't see any of the city council members there, but it's okay. It was too early.
And you're not paying us a lot of money to take it there?
It was 10 o'clock.
And, yeah, that was one of the events I attended. There was another event that me and the city manager were at, but it's confidential, I can't mention it.
It is confidential.
Couple of you missed it, too. They were supposed to be there.
Yes.[1663.13]
Okay, oh, and then now, I had the, I participated in the two big events celebrating the thirty-three anniversary of the YAMN reunion, one was in Dearborn, and another one the next day was in Hamtramck. Just different groups organized the same event, so in two different days. That, and that event, I saw Mayor Putan there and, and Mr. Samiri was there too. Chowdhury called me, you know, wondering why he wasn't invited, I wasn't the one organizing that, I was a guest, you know. So those are the, some of the events I attended last week and visited some schools here and there. That's it for my report, we'll move to the mayor's pro-time report.
Mr. Chair? So I was there with you, United, Yemen, nobody invited me, actually.
What did you know? Your buddy, Councilman Sumari called you up?
So I was going to Canton by the gorge, I was almost there, and I saw the light, Abnam Gova, and it's there, so I'm very close to there. So I was actually earlier, two hours earlier than the event, then I'm alone, I need a coffee shop, and I call Sumari, "Are you coming, Mr. Councilman?", I cannot go to the coffee shop alone, so I go to the coffee shop back and forth, waiting for Mayor and everybody to come. So, so this is the one I did. The second one, of course, we invite you, Mr. Councilman, the, what am I, Gate of Columbus, we call you. So that one we had it, we go there. Which, that's all, and second, the camera thing, we have to worry, previous practice, DDA, we had a push button to flash the light and to control the traffic, nobody used that, we spent sixty thousand dollar around, also camera, and it was, it did not work very good, we have to replace it, like a, like a park meter right now. We was, the previous council member was thinking, it was a good idea right now, reality is here, people complaining about that one. So we have to worry about that camera thing we introduced today, that one, I just want you guys to look at that. And also, register, the consent agenda, register things, invoice register, I'm requesting some, most of the council member, look at that one. Previous practice, we had one time pass the resolution, over ten thousand dollar, without our permission, nobody can expand it. So just wanna give you a little history of the what we had been, there was the reason why not. So, and everything else, right now, city is moving right direction. And other thing, nothing personal, Mr. Councilman Chowdhury, we have to practice our fairness, anything as a council member, I'm the candidate, I cannot invite anybody, say anything when I was, I'm sitting around here, it's not a good practice, we can do the outside and, or get out from the council, we can do it. If one person do it and some other person, and we don't wanna that kinds of practice. It was not previous day also here, so that is the good thing I have to say. And all that, everybody doing good job, city moving forward, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor Putan. By the way, that's a good advice to read the, you know, the invoices and stuff before the meeting. That was brought up because I keep calling them to discuss that, so.
I need to take credit.
Thank you.
It's my fault too, I have the senior, I should read it because I'm very busy.
Well, he's the most senior, so sometimes I ask him about-
I'm busy, 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 working, working, you know, so I'm sorry.
Thank you, uh, city council reports.
Commissioner?
Yes, Councilman.
We had an event last Sunday, one of very delightful guy came from Bangladesh. He actually, we tried to ignition him, he should be here, anytime he was out of state, he's come now again. So this guy actually, big time helping the public education in Bangladesh, and he's the father of the mobile banking technology in our country. All the ATM booth in our country beginning from his hand. He's a really educated guy and I'm really humble and honor him to visit our country, our city. And maybe he should be coming up before the pandemic, if he's coming, so we can introduce him. And my second, second thing, sorry, I missed the two other event, in Dearborn and Hamtramck. Sorry, my colleague, he called me half hour before, I just getting the, my job, I said, "Man, if he told me before, at least I can manage it." I hope in future, we can cooperate each other and I don't wanna miss it again, thank you very much.
No problem, and, and you reminded me, two, two events that I, I met two officials from Bangladesh in the past two weeks. We honored one from the opposition, then the next day, we honored someone from the ruling party. So, so they don't get mad. Actually, I came at nine o'clock to the CEO to give a certificate somewhere. All right, next one.
Go ahead, I don't have anything much, thank you everyone. We went to MML training, that was really great learning process, a lot of good things to learn. Thank you, Councilman, and I'm to encourage me to sign up for it, even though I lose my Friday income, but that was good to know, a lot of good things, so. This is part of the reason I missed couple of the event on the weekend, was unable to attend. Thank you everyone, have a great night, thank you.
So one, Chowdhury?
Well, I didn't know I couldn't invite people to my personal party, you know, it's just, whatever. But it's part of, I understand.
Yeah, you can campaign on city, try more money.
I see, okay. So anyway, as you heard from Councilman Mohit Mahmood, that we were at MML training over the weekend, so Friday, we had to go, so that's why we missed that, our grand opening. And we came back Saturday evening, late evening, and we were tired. And that's why some of the stuff we missed over the weekend. However, we learned a lot of things from the experienced MML trainers, you know, they talk about the local cities exclusively, new, new council members and advanced classes. And lots of grants are out there, you know, they talk about how do you apply for grants and how to get hands-on things. So I know, I cannot discount everything here, but I will be conveying this to our city manager, and you guys are already working on those things. As I have other things, heat is rising, so stay cool, stay inside, and we are planting more trees, so it will give us a shed and air, I love trees, I participated many times tree planting, and that's all I wanted to say, and everybody be safe and stay cool.
All right, thank you. Anyone else you wanna say? All right, thank you. So next one is, do you have anything for the chief financial officer?
Mayor, anything?
You have?
Anything, report? No.
All right, thank you, so the city manager report, please.
Nothing extra at this time, Mayor, I covered mostly the community announcements throughout the meeting.
Okay, all right. So we move then to the public comment again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lynn Vladby.
Save the best for us.
He insists.
Hi, Mayor and Council, I'll keep this quick. I just wanna give congratulations to Khalid and to say that I appreciate his willingness to serve the community in his retirement, looking at his application, he has a wealth of experience and variety of different types of work that I think will be really relevant to his position on the CBA. So I just wanna congratulate him. And then I also wanted to comment that getting the SNA software, I think is really a good move. I think that will really increase efficiency. I've worked in environments where we don't have just like a simple tool like tracking software to make everybody's job easier, so I think they'll increase efficiency across departments and for city hall as a whole, and every year, when departments are putting together those reports, they don't have to spend so much time tracking everything down and, you know, working independently of each other. So I think it'll also work for cohesion within city hall, so just wanted to comment on those and happy Memorial Day, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Drum roll, Mr. Bill Meyer.
So Max, he said, you kept your garbage in your garage for twenty years?
Throw it out, like-
It's missing all over now.
It, it turns over weekly, though.
I have, remember that, okay. So you know what today felt like, was like a, sort of like a courtroom, but sort of like a sales room, a sales pitch, everyone is selling things, and you guys bought a lot of stuff today, and you just spent, you're happy spending money, it's, nobody challenged anything, nobody asked any critical questions about anything they were selling, you just bought it. Thank you for the ACLU guy showed up and at least presented another side of the story about the cameras, security cameras, people who are concerned about privacy and issues like that. I, I, people come up here to sell things and no disrespect to the young lady who's selling, she's working for a company, she wants to sell things and make money, that's her job. She has no investment in him, Trump personally, you represent the people here, is this good for the people or isn't? And you don't have any idea because you didn't even question what these cameras are, and you did not research it at all, I can tell, by the way, you just loved what she said, just like the people who sold us the parking meters four years ago. That sounded like a great idea, man, we don't have to do anything, let, let them put the meters there, and look what happened.
Did I ask questions, you all asked questions?
Yeah.
We're not, we didn't voted for it.
Okay, but don't take my time. All right, yeah, so I, no, you, you did a little bit, but not enough. I mean, this is, this is like a court trial and, and the person's presenting the, the one side's story and the other side's not there, you're hearing one side. Thank you, can I ask for an extra minute? So, uh, so a long guy gets fired in a second like that, and a parking meter company, you gotta pay millions of dollars to get rid of them. I mean, this, what union does he want to do? I mean, it's, it's a shame that a guy can do a job like that and just be cut off like that. I mean, if he's doing a bad job, I agree, but why do we get stuck in the contracts that you can't get out of? It's really bad, be careful. And these cameras, I don't wanna discredit this person who's doing a great job, but I have to say, these, what, cameras, that are like, where are you gonna put them in the city? How do they cover, this one's three thousand, I mean, how many cameras, you gonna have, two? You gonna have a hundred? This is two square miles, what, what streets are you gonna cover? In front of the bars, in front of the, you know, you're gonna need like fifty cameras to cover this whole city. That's, I mean, I don't know, like, did you look into that? I just don't think you guys are doing more, you know. I mean, I, I know it's a hard job to do this, to come here, but we gotta have the other side of the story, and you're the other side of the story, we're only here in the sales pitch, and you are the people that have to challenge the sales pitch, because you represent us, because we can't do it, except for three minutes, so thank you.
Thank you.
I did later.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Mayor, that's all for public comments.
Mr. Chair?
Okay, so we do this, you wanna?
I realize, apologize, I had some observation, I'd like to suspend the law and I'd like to address that issue again, what I saw.
Yeah.
It's awkward for him to do that. So here, I come from work around two o'clock in the Hamtramck, two o'clock in the morning. So three days on row, I saw somebody try to block my car. Yeah, so waiting, waiting, and I don't get out from my car, I wanna see who is that person. So I try to block them, you know, they come up and try to make it, and then go away. So, so it is suspected carjacking or hijacking things, I saw that, okay. So just wanna let everybody know, make sure you don't get out from the car, if it is some car behind you waiting or in the middle of the street and just waiting, and that's all I did. I didn't call the police and that time, they're gonna be gone anyway, so I, I, I use my caution.
Those cameras be good for that?
No, no, it's not gonna be good. Camera-related thing is very deeply what Bill tried to say, Antonio already discussed that one, I don't wanna my city to somebody object for something else. This data could be transported somewhere else, and we don't know where that data going. I have a family member came from somewhere else, friend came with them, I don't know what kinds of person he or she, and, and, and later on, from the data collection, and I'm gonna be the problem, oh, this guy came here, I need your question, why they came here, we don't want that kinds of thing too. So there's the two mile squad, our police department doing very good job, so that's all, thank you.
Thank you, and-
But other cities are doing it, our local, surrounding cities are doing it, and we have our crime rate keep going higher and higher, so somehow, we need to keep it controlled. So if we, if we always focus on the negative side instead of the positive side, so we have to, I think we need to have more presentation regarding this matter to see, you know, how far content information gonna pass out to the other areas.
All right, so from now until then, we do more research and study the positive cons of this and let's see. And if it's gonna be installed, of course, that much cost, if we see it's good for the city, we can't afford, then we can just put them maybe in the entrances of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's what my point, we may need like five or six, maybe that's the point of the-
So, yeah, if, if it turns out to be good. So we will do some study for this. All right, thanks so much, and, and I, I would love to see some that can detect, you know, the speeding cars and reckless drivers, give them tickets, you know.
Was there a legal machine?
Yeah.
You can get red light tickets, I think, like that through the vehicles, it has to be observed by an officer.
Yeah, observed by the physical.
All right, okay, thank you so much, I think we're done, we move to adjourn now. I'll make a motion adjourn.
Hold a second.
All right, it's seven, eight forty-eight.
Good night.
Thank you.
Close session.